Alright, so I'm gonna start with some host people to this guideline for the comments first. So persons wishing to make any comment, each station is individual. So if you would like to make a public comment, please sign up and you will have to put your name and your address. And then when it time comes, then our chair will ask for the public comment. And again, we would like to verbally say your name and your address. And then you won't have three minutes per person for your comments. And then we also have the Zoom portion over there with Dave Wellman is facilitating. So we'll be in-person comments first and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Wellman. During the Zoom call, if you would like to make more comments, please type your name and address. You do not have to type your comment into the chat function, but if you'd like to, you can. Mr. Wellman will call on you, so type your name and your address. That does signify that you would like to make a comment. And the only comments that will be heard today have to be related to the TDD boundary itself. Commentary on NICD or the rail planning of the TDD developments within each of the communities before we move out of order. Okay? So alright, so we're gonna just jump into a presentation here. And it's back of us, I know some of the board, you might have to turn around, or you might have to hang up these. But we'll just go ahead and jump into the presentations. Good morning, everyone, good morning, our RDA Board of Directors, audience members, our virtual participants on Zoom. I'm Sheri Ziller, I'm the President and CEO here at the RDA. My privilege to be here today for the consideration of establishing seven of our transit development boundaries. I am joined today by the RDA team. We have MKSK, we have Aaron Kowalski, we have Abby Babas, she's around here somewhere. Policy Analytics Bill Sheldrake, David Reynolds, and then KPMG, we have Vince Dolan and Lauren Wilson with us today. So we've done a short presentation and we're gonna sketch out the impacts of the rail projects here in Northwest Indiana and how the RDA worked with a lot of our local communities to follow those boundaries of each of the transit development districts being heard today with each of our community investment goals in mind. So I would like to thank the following officials from our TDD communities, most of which I see here in the audience today, or they will be here later on to offer their comments in support of the TDD process. So we do have letters of support and/or resolutions from the following communities. City of Hammond, Town of Munster, Town of Dyer, City of New Chicago, City of Gary for the Miller Station, City of Michigan City, City of Portage, Town of Agden Dunes. I would like to thank Mayor Tom McDermott, Phil Taylorn, Dustin Anderson, and the Munster Town Council. I see Dave Hein, Frank Jacobson, and then the Dyer Town Council. I see Brian Holman, I'm sorry, I could see walking. Mayor Hoplin, Frank Rivera, Sandra Favela, Doug Powers, the leadership team at New Chicago. Mayor Jerome Prince, Deputy Mayor of TransUnion District. AJ Bittner and the leadership team at the City of Gary. Mayor Perry, Skyler York, and the leadership team at Michigan City. Mayor Sue Lynch and AJ Manbroe with the City of Portage. Agden Dunes Town with the Council President Scott Keegan and Councilman Doug Cannon, which I learned about, I do very much apologize. And the Agden Dunes Town Council as well, and of course, our TDD steering committee. Your support has brought us to this point. This is such a huge milestone for Northwest Indiana to come and shoot. So thank you all for your collaboration so far. We will remain engaged and optimistic about the future development in our communities here in Northwest Indiana. And we look forward to all of your help to continue making this a successful development process. So just a few slides here, here, and you can advance to the next slide, just a quick rail update. It might be a bit of a delay, so I'll just jump into it. The Federal Transit Administration, they did sign the grant providing the funding to make the Westlake border project a reality. So NICD, Northwest Indiana Community Transportation Districts. They're already working with their design and construction teams to begin the four-plus years to make the Westlake line operational. And then Double Track, they also received the grant providing federal funds beginning of January. So I would say that the RDA were moving on our own separate mission, which is to ensure that the best options for development around the station areas are considered, they're re-CEO fire communities, they're eventually funded, and they're ready to place. So both rail projects are currently under construction with completion dates of 2024 and 2025 with the Westlake border and the Double Track projects being completed. So the next slide with the planning entities. So what I would say here is during the past three years, the RDA, we've been meeting with our station area community leaders to really better understand their own visions and planning concepts for transit-oriented development. So the RDA, we pulled together our planning team to assist in these efforts again, MKSK, KPMG, Policy Analytics. So the hearing today is the next step in the process of fully bringing these said of development tools into play to continue to help grow the Northwest Indiana economy to further establish that higher quality of life for us as a region. So the role of the RDA, next slide. You can see what's on the screen here, but really the role of the RDA in this is to help our communities create more attractive and secure neighborhoods. And as we navigate through this process, we really are enabling our communities to compete for those young professionals who work in Chicago and to make our communities more attractive for businesses and people who will work here in Indiana. And then my next slide, which is the last one to leave, and we have to hold her, is just some background. The RDA was given the task as part of its establishing legislation to assist in developing and furthering commuter rail in Northwest Indiana as part of a strategy to increase that connectivity with Chicago to grow the economy of our region. So the state provided funding, and in the 2015, and then the 2017 legislative session made it very clear that the RDA was to take the lead in the financing of the railroad expansion. And then further in 2017, the state cast the RDA assisting municipalities in which the stations were situated to provide the funding mechanisms to help them plan for and financing the transit-oriented development, their TRD. So the RDA's 2016 comprehensive strategic plan conservatively estimated that the state would receive more than $500 million in state income and state sales revenue from the completion of both the rail projects and the transit-oriented development. And the population growth in Northwest Indiana is estimated to increase by 11,000. That's a 1.4% over the baseline. And capital investment yet around the rail stations is estimated to exceed $2.7 billion. This is the largest economic development project in the state's history. So again, I want to thank all of you, the Board of Directors, everyone in this room, all of our community partners. Such a huge part in this transformational time in Northwest Indiana and to get us to where we're at right now and today. So with that, I'm gonna hand that over to my colleague, Aaron Kowalski from MKSK, State of the Union.
Room and online. Appreciate your time today. I'm gonna go through these slides real quickly. If or members at the end of this slide that have questions, we'd be happy to clarify or answer the question. So we talked a little bit about the boundary process legislation and really the goal, as Sheri stated, is to leverage historic investment infrastructure in a way that allows for Northwest Indiana to continue to compete with the Chicagoland area. You see up on the screen, a number of the Chicago suburbs and kind of in general calculations of population growth, new constructions for foot and real estate value changes that occurred after significant investments in the metro system in Chicago. And so regionally and nationally, we understand that transit investments follow on investment from the private market. And we anticipate that as the rail projects are completed, as the local communities are focused on opportunity sites, whether they hopefully own property or privately own property, but developers that might be interested in that private development, we anticipate this level of investment from the private market in Northwest Indiana similar to what has occurred in the past in the Chicago suburbs. So the main focus is on promoting transit-oriented development. What's important here is the TDD or Transit Development District is a tool to allow for the local communities and the RDA to support transit-oriented development within our cities and towns in Northwest Indiana, specifically along the South Shore Double Track and Westlake lines. So what is TDD and what TDD is not? So a TDD is an economic development boundary similar to a district that is allowed by statute to be one-half mile or more commonly known as three hundred and twenty acres in area. And this is a special economic development district will be approved by the RDA Board. This is the first of those hearings in the process, and then downstate, state budget committee at that point. A base will be set likely in calendar year 2022. And the districts can continue to start to generate income and income, excuse me. And really, this is a process that's been formed, you know, by close collaboration over the last several years with all the different local units. We have worked very carefully to understand the economic development goals of each community, how they differ, and really try to devise these boundaries in a way to help the communities implement those opportunities that they've identified as well as that we've identified through this process. A TDD is not zoning or confidence, planning the local units, retaining land use and zoning control through this whole process. Now, that's a very important part of this conversation today because that really has informed how we devise the boundaries in that we really understand that the local units are the groups that will be enabling this type of development to occur through their local zoning and planning. And so we didn't want to, through this process, create any boundaries that were not aligned with what the local units want. This is an RDA, it's a sponsored process, it's not a local process, but we've been working in very close collaboration with the local units. And the domain is not part of this process. This is not a direct partnership with any specific developer, although this process is such that, as Sheri mentioned with Industry Days, we really have activated development community both in Northwest Indiana, Chicagoland area, and nationally. This is not the rail project, and we are not NICD, but we are working collaboratively with NICD through this whole process to help them to understand now to these certain areas. Next slide, please. So process and legislation, these districts capture the incremental growth in local income and property tax revenue for use of public assets related to station area. And it's important to note that revenue collected in the district is spent in the district. And so as we go through the individual district boundaries, you'll see those. There's a boundary that's split between two local units of government. For instance, in Munster and Dyer at Main Street, or Portage and Agden Dunes. Again, the revenue collected in the district is spent in the district and in the local units. I'll reiterate again, local community retains land use and zoning control. This is the first of two public hearings required by the process. Prior to this, we had public meetings with each of the local units to help get community input. We've also met countless times with representatives from community leadership, life systems. So our process really is a four-step process. The first process was, second process is becoming familiar with the station areas, doing a lot of research and analysis. Some of you may remember the bus tour that he did before COVID. And really what that allowed us to do is do relationships with the local units and really all roll up our sleeves together and work collaboratively on what we call community leadership workshops. Understand plans that have been done in the past as well as the opportunities that our analysis had brought to the table. And really that was collaboratively how we devised the boundary together, which gets us to the next step in the process, which is actually where we drafted the boundary. So we understood the requirements via statute that, you know, required the stations themselves to be in the boundary. And started a little bit later. We've identified community preferences for development, other than that, the local units, any use of zoning control. Market forces, market analysis, policy analytics, and KPMG provided us with a lot of detailed analysis to understand what kind of development could be anticipated in this area. And know that that analysis has been done throughout this whole process. We understand COVID happened during this process, but we were allowed to, able to kind of group order devising these boundaries with the local units. And then kind of where we are in the process today, kind of concluding step four. We worked with the local units to confirm the boundaries. Many of these boundaries went through multiple iterations with the local communities. Opportunity sites were added and removed. And we've been working up until even this last few weeks to confirm these boundaries with the local units. So this is the first of those meetings, of course, subsequent public hearings, they could connect. So the boundaries ready for RDA Board review, seven boundaries in eight communities. So as Sheri mentioned, we will be reviewing those here momentarily. But as we arrive at that process, we've done our analysis, our due diligence. We've held community input workshops as well as very detailed and important meetings with leadership in each community. We drafted the boundaries and viewed the local units, the local units have invited the others to work for the boundaries. We've done what we call high-level development planning, paired with the economic development analysis to understand what could be anticipated, both in a kind of low, medium, and high scenario in each of the areas. And we've reported that out to the local communities. We've got the website that has had a ton of traffic, and I'm sure after today, we'll see even more. We're continuing to keep that website, NWITDD.com updated, and we will do so for the foreseeable future. So we're really at a point now where this is the kind of the first milestone in confirming the batteries are ready to be set. So the first group of TDD batteries is established point two. We have remaining TDD batteries in progress for Gary downtown, metro area, Du Park, and Beverly Shores. And we will be bringing those to the Board at some point. So a few just kind of points on the specifics of a transit development district, how it works, and especially how it interfaces with TIP districts. Because in many of these communities, there are existing TIP districts. So we've talked already about how the TDD permits the capture of incremental property tax and local income tax revenues for development around the station area. Within the same district, capturing the community, you know, it's a SBA, it's back in the community. However, when the TDD expires in 2047 per statute, all the revenue will be returned back to the base, so the base will be reset. If there is a TIP district existing, and you can see on the chart on screen, the TIP district will continue to operate as it has, that service will be paid. As it exists within the existing TIP, the TDD will not interfere with any TIP functions. But there are some benefits to have a TDD overlay on a TIP, which are you can essentially extend the life of the TIP. And what I mean by that is if you have a TIP that is expiring, the TDD overlay can continue to collect that level of increment until 2047. Then there are the added bonuses of the incremental income tax that can be added with the capital stack as well in these areas. Another important point is there's the ability for local units to work with the RDA as governed by an MOU to get bonds at a favorable rate from the state of Indiana that do not hit the local units' bonds. So some specifics of the TDD districts and how they will operate. Again, it will be governed by an MOU, that will be never to change. So as we get kind of the end of these slides, again, this is our investment communities. Through this process, I personally, as well as my team, have had the pleasure of working with the RDA Board as well as the local units and really helping to leverage the power of the RDA as kind of a significant regional entity to help identify, best not to be, to provide technical assistance, forge local partnerships, really highlight those innovative financial options, and really help the communities with their local growth path. So another thing to mention, I won't go through all of this information, because it's a lot here, but transit-oriented development, this is walkable and mixed-use development. If you think of Kenny downtown in Northwest Indiana, the Main Street, or the Long South Shore Line, that is TOD by nature. And so a lot of this process is identifying that transportation rates of bump, the free quality bump, and the walkable fence located in your stations. And but it's different in each community. And so as we go through this process, developing these TDD boundaries, respecting the economic growth paths of each community and the ability to, you know, utilize TDD to enable community as each community sees appropriate. In general, though, TOD is, it creates competitive communities that have good quality development, that are walkable, and contribute to a vibrant local community. So I'll close with, you know, this isn't just a boundary, this is devised to complement the challenges of the local communities. And I would welcome you to find out more about this process over the coming months on the RDA's website, NWITDD.com. There's no specific website for this process. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chairman Vasco, if there's any questions or clarifications needed by the Board. Or any questions for Aaron?
Mr. Chair, I'd just feel other officials, I'd like to recognize that I failed to do so in my opening remarks. Senator Rick Meyer, Chair Jerry Tippie, Councilperson Mary Canis, if they were, Tom of Dyer. And then I mentioned people earlier, I'm Dr. Payne, or the, oh, for the, thank you. Sorry again, if I looked you up, but I'm gonna turn Aaron over to you, Aaron, to start with our first one.
Sounds good. So the first community that will be evaluating the boundary for during this public hearing is the Hammond Gateway Boundary. And as Sheri mentioned, we'll be taking public comments at the end of the room and via the web. And we'll have directions on how to do that at the end of this process. I'll also note that if you're in the room, there are large-scale printouts of each of the boundaries here. So after the hearing, I'd invite you to take a look at them and, 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 and. So Hammond TDD Boundary is encompassing of the area near Gateway Station, where the Westlake line is making improvements to that area, as well as a new station that will service the community right here at State Line. You can see the two orange lines on the screen, that is where the current South Shore Line and the Westlake Line will converge. We've worked with the City of Hammond to devise this boundary to take advantage of that kind of opportunities immediately around the Gateway Station as well as further south in the downtown area. And I will acknowledge that the town, or sorry, that the city has completed a downtown plan recently that has helped guide the downtown portion of the DDD boundary. Also important to note that this boundary is 314 acres in area, so it is under the 320 acres allowed by statute. And you can see on this map here, there are a number of places that we've identified in consultation with the City of Hammond, looking at some opportunity areas directly around the Gateway Station site, particularly to the north, where there is likely an opportunity to develop some property in a mixed-use fashion that would support transportation-oriented development to allow for continued investment in the neighborhood, following along not only the rail investment, but the Goslin and Chicago Street improvements that the city has underway. And then in the downtown, you'll actually see the entire downtown is located as an opportunity area. The city ambitions a lot of growth and investment in the downtown. And in addition to the Gateway Station, the city is planning on a future downtown station along the Westlake line. So we mentioned earlier in this process how there were a lot of meetings in each milestones with each community. And I won't go through all of these things, but we've continued to meet over the last several years. We continue to work closely with Hammond Leadership, who are here in the room on this boundary. And I think at this point, we can go to the next slide, where we can actually go through, sorry, one more slide, I apologize. The public comment, but actually, Abby, if you want to go back a slide. We also wanted to acknowledge that there are a number of developments already underway in downtown Hammond that will be aided by this TDD boundary establishment. So public comment period, again, Sheri went through these directions. This is the point where we will receive comment on the Hammond wrapped TDD boundary. There is a signup sheet, if anyone in the room would like to write public comment. And for those attending virtually, and I appreciate the number of folks online. If you do wish to make a public comment, please type your name and address in the chat function. And then Dave Wellman with the RDA will unmute you and allow for you to talk. Comments are limited to three minutes per person as a reminder. And only comments related to the boundaries will be imported. We will not take comments on NICD, rail planning, or TDD, only well-intended to each community. First comment from Hammond Gateway is Phil.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks, Paul Taylor, I'm the Chief Staff at the City of Hammond. Very excited to be here on behalf of Mayor McDermott and all the administrations of the city to speak about TDD. I did ask, Brian Holman has been our representative for the Transit Development District. And I asked him if he was gonna speak as well. He said if I mess up, he'll come up after, so. This has been a long process. This is not something that happened overnight, putting this district together. There have been many internal meetings with the city, as well as some public ones. I think obviously Mayor Tom has been heavily involved with this process, as well as, I think, every single one of our council people. So we've been excited to put this district together. We're very excited about the finished product, with what we think is the ideal district, which obviously could expand in the future. When we were putting this together, we really thought about what properties are ripe for development, but also what properties are already developed that potentially could have expansion in the future that we wanted to build off of that as well. We've been working on this a very long time, so as it was mentioned by Aaron, we've actually had, we already announced three developments in downtown Hammond that are located in the district. These developments are gonna add up to about 350 new units, residential units in downtown Hammond. This is new for us. I mean, we have apartment buildings in the city, but we don't really have this type of more modern apartments that I think that the younger generation is really gonna be excited about as well. There's about $75 million worth of development that we've already announced. And this is done through a development agreement, it's already basically signed, sealed, delivered. And we are currently in conversations with three other developers. I hope that we'll be making another announcement here in the very near future in this district as well. I want to say that there's some people here from City of Hammond residents that are in this room that are very excited to say that because it shows that we have people in the city that very much care about this process and how important this is to the city. Besides the fact that obviously we've got tax increment financing for everybody knows that are involved, how important that tool is for, to get deals done. But to add on the income tax component that we've never had access to in the past, as well as the financing component, so that we will be working together with the RDA and having their historically strong and having their historically strong financial strength behind some of the deals that we're focused on. We know how important that's been really for the city of Hammond and to get some of these developments done. So those are the key points. And I really want to thank Sherry Ziller and her team that have worked with us very closely throughout this entire process. It hasn't just been, you know, very straightforward. There has been some back and forth as far as changes that we wanted to see and the things that we wanted to do. It may have been very easy to work with. I also wanted to thank Anthony Tarver, who's our, obviously, our representative on the RDA, who is instrumental throughout this process, and Brian Holland, who's been our representative on the Transit Development District. So on behalf of City of Hammond, thank you for everything. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has after we even have this.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for your very positive comments.
No, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on to the next station. Okay, that concludes the Hammond portion of the public hearing. And we will enter into the East Chicago portion of the public hearing. Thank you to everyone from East Chicago who are here today and before, of course, this is the public and those online. The East Chicago Boundary, we've worked very hard with East Chicago Leadership over the last several years to devise this boundary. It's kind of a unique location in that the East Chicago Station, number one existing Mickey Station is one of the busiest commuter stations on the entire line. It is really situated on the border of Hammond and East Chicago, right along Carroll, Michigan, so towards the bottom of the screen, so right in both. To the direct west of the station on Indianapolis Boulevard, this Gossman Neighborhood, which is a very stable and vibrant neighborhood that the city wishes to continue to support in the future. This neighborhood has a high percentage of homeownership as well as quite a bit of investment in people that utilize it to train on a regular basis for purposes of getting to employment. So as we look at the southern portion of the boundary, devising that boundary really was about how do we begin to reinvent some of the Indianapolis Boulevard coverage in that area to further support walkable TOD within close proximity of that station area? How do we also through this process capture Indianapolis Boulevard, which is also US 20, in a way that potential TDD dollars can be leveraged in a way to improve? That corridor is a major regional corridor in a way that that could encourage economic development within the community. And as we move further north in the boundary, you will see properties on both sides of Indianapolis Boulevard captured. These are areas that City of East Chicago has identified through their previous plans as well as through our analysis. They're areas that may see investment here in the near future. Some of these sites are industrial sites that they would like to transition either to more modern employment uses or in some cases residential uses as well, especially for those areas, neighborhoods. Marquette Trail will be going through this area as well. So it's important to note that in addition to access to the station area in Indianapolis Boulevard is a crucial link for those residents to the Marquette Trail that will likely run through this corridor as well. And then further north, as we get toward Chicago Avenue, kind of the historical commercial node in this area, it really is about leveraging the opportunity to continue to see infill type economic development occur in this area and provide the city with another tool to allow for this to occur. So this boundary is 298.7 acres, again, under what is allowed by statute. And then the next slide, we've worked closely with City of East Chicago to identify some sites close by, within walkable proximity to the station area. In most cases, there's one site up on Chicago that they will redevelop in the future, that their plans to support redevelopment of in the future and continued investment in a way that will be beneficial to the community. So again, we met a number of times with the community. We've made several adjustments even as of recently to the boundary. Per staff request, we received a large support for this boundary. And we continue to work very closely with City of East Chicago staff on this initiative. So I think we're at this part of the process where we would take public comment, either for those in the room or those online. And again, the same rules as the previous public comment period apply. Is nobody signed up for public comments in the room? How about online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
That concludes the public hearing portion for East Chicago. And we will start the public hearing portion for the boundary focused as at Gary Miller. Before we get into that boundary, though, I will acknowledge that we're also meeting at Gary Downtown. We're working very closely with leadership to devise that boundary that we will report to the RDA for. So Gary Miller focused around kind of the historic South Shore Station. There's a lot of investment already occurring in this area. As part of the double track project, the rail alignment is changing. They're actually going to remove a curb in the Mickey rail that will allow for faster times to the area and enhance safety. If you've been in this area recently, you'll know that the US 12 portion through this area has been vacated. And that actually is going to allow for those rail improvements ongoing or construction today is a total kind of redo of US 20 Melrose through this area with sidewalks, complete streets, new curbs. And it really is substantial improvements to this area in addition to the brand new Mickey Station and parking lot that are being built from this area that will replace the existing station area. City of Gary's also made substantial investments in Lake Street. We continue to make investments in that area as well as Marquette Park. And then, of course, we have this area as the western terminus of the national park. So there's a lot of things happening in Gary Miller. It is what we would call a historic TOD area. The village around Miller is very much an area that is set up to be a walkable community. In addition to the areas directly around the station, we've identified several sites that you'll see off of the boundary. Those include the former work school, the former Edda School and Commercial District, and the former Army. And then as we look at economic development opportunities in this area, there's substantial opportunity right around the neighborhood. There's substantial opportunity that can leverage the stable and vibrant residential district that exists on Lake Street as well as a number of city-owned properties that are really shovel ready for development here in the community. So again, as we work through this process very closely with the city staff before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and as of recent, we continue to make adjustments as requested by staff. And we very much appreciate their cooperation and process. So with that, we'd be happy to take any public comments, whether it be in person or online. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Gary Mira's road friends, I bring the greetings. I want to stand in favor of the boundaries that have been described by Aaron today. We've all been working collectively. I picked up the torch from our fallen brother Eric Reeves, who served tirelessly on the TDD charity committee before his untimely death. But we are excited about this project going forward. We know that it will be the economic engine that revitalizes Gary. Thank you.
Any online comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to the next station. Great. Thank you, Dustin. But we keep hearing your session. And we'll start the Michigan City session focused on those So the Michigan City Boundary, 315 acres in area. You can see the 11th Street Station, which of course has been significantly impressed recently as it went on the project. Mickey, who is over, has been selected. That's kind of in the middle of the street, right at 11th and Franklin. And what we've worked closely with City of Michigan City officials on is devising a boundary that not only supports continued growth and revitalization and vibrancy in their downtown area, further north, kind of up to Trail Creek, where you kind of get into the lakefront area, but as well as it's south of 11th Street, where historically you have had the same level of investment that has occurred further north towards the lakefront. So as we think about this boundary, it really is about how do we leverage the downtown as an existing good quality, walkable, vibrant district? How do we continue to go upon that as transit is approved in this area? And how do we then leverage it in a way to see significant economic growth in this area? And then as we look at economic development opportunities in this area, and again, we've worked on these in close collaboration with city leadership, there are properties both in the northern portion of the downtown area, along Trail Creek, where there are also some projects that have been announced recently that will kind of aid in continuing to rebuild this area as well as some real opportunity south of 11th Street, whether it be a former St. Anthony Hospital, some potential kind of adjacent school owned and church owned properties and properties directly across the state. And we've worked very closely with City of Michigan City staff to engage with them during this process. We actually had a meeting this morning with the City of Michigan City Economic Development Staff to give them an update that Mr. Badcock was a member of. So we continue to engage with the Michigan City. And then as for opportunities, you can see a number of sites that are identified as by the city as places where either they have ongoing economic development activities or anticipate that in the very near future. And again, this boundary will aid in continued vibrancy conditions. And public comments?
No, I'm going to send it.
Aaron, five. Oh, I'm sorry. We go back to that. Oh, one more please. 315 acres is the size of this boundary. So Andrew, what is your part? Any online comments?
Yes, we have Mr. Skyler York, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for Michigan City. Skyler, go ahead.
Hey, good. Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I had an issue come up here at work. But I wanted to offer some comments. First of all, it's very exciting times for Northwest Indiana right now. First, I would like to thank the RDA and their board and the TDD Steering Committee for their leadership in guiding this huge task to completion. And the consultants as well. The consultants that you have engaged have been wonderful. They've offered lots of insight and guidance along this process. So it's been great. So thank you for that as well. And thank you for allowing us to have access to them. That's been just very helpful. The TDD boundaries that have been created are valuable tools to help ensure the viability of rail transit and connectivity across our various communities in Northwest Indiana. But not only are the TDs affirm, not only do the TDs affirm our commitment to transit and connectivity, but I see it as a tool for future growth and economic development across the region. Right now in Michigan City, we are already seeing the new development in our city. And I think it can be directly attributed to the double tracking project. And not only that, but the opportunities that the TDD will offer in our downtown and in our expanded downtown, I would say. So in closing, I'd just like to say that we are very excited about the opportunities the TDD will create for Michigan City, LaPorte, and LaPorte County. And I'd like to just thank all of you for your support in making this happen. And thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all.
Great. That concludes Michigan City's portion of this hearing. We'll move to Munster-Dyer Main Street. Again, this is a district that is split between two communities. So we work closely with both communities. This is the Main Street area. So this is the terminus of the West Lake Line and Mickey parking lots. There's a large commuter lot planned more north of the Main Street area. And then south of Main Street area in Dyer, there is planned a kind of a parking ride block, short form parking, as well as accessible parking. As part of this process, Mickey is also extending Main Street from the intersection of Sheffield and Columbia along Main to the intersection of kind of the Mickey Station. They're continuing all the way to the State Line. As part of this improvement, though, there's an opportunity really to activate economic development sites within this area, including property adjacent to the Mickey Station and further to the south. So as we work through this process, we devise a boundary that's 311 acres, 195 Munster, 116 in Dyer that really cements what they feel are the economic development opportunities that they see that can take advantage of this transit development district and leverage the opportunities in this area. In addition, it sets up both communities to make a significant improvement to Main Street as a primary gateway both to their communities and the TOD district. And as we consider opportunity sites in this area, again, the property closest to the Mickey Station is really high quality development sites, greenfield sites today, so 100 dollar. And there's really an opportunity to, you know, as the community see fit with local needs and ability, see the kind of development that they want in this area over foreseeable future. And then further south, there's some opportunity to activate some commercial districts within the area further south on Sheffield. We met with Munster quite a few times in this boundary. And a lot of the meetings that we held with Munster were about both this boundary and the Ridge Road Boundary that we'll talk about in a moment. We recently, as Sherry mentioned, met with council and have received support. The next kind of slide here shows the number of times we've also met with Town Dyer as recently as last week. And we really have kind of worked closely with them to make some tweaks to the boundary. And there may be some slight tweaks to the boundary that may occur in the Dyer area before the next hearing of the 14. So with that, I'd be happy to receive any comments. Oh, and that boundary is 311 acres. And each community is, let me find it, sorry. 195 and 160 Munster.
Chairman, there are two people I have to find out. Okay. First would be Mr. David Hine, Town of Dyer. Morning. Morning, RDA Board. Mr. Chairman, I'm Dave Hine, Town Manager with Dyer. On behalf of the council and the Town of Dyer, we look forward to the letter of support for the project and TDD boundaries. Previously stated by all colleagues, both online and in the room. We thank everyone for the cooperation, over a abundance of information through this process. And we look forward to working with Munster to continue to redevelop this area. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chairman, next is Kevin Rowland.
Any online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that concludes this portion of the hearing. We'll enter into the Munster Ridge Road Boundary portion of the process. So we've worked very closely with Town Munster officials, looking at the Ridge Road area, which sets up as kind of a wonderful dense walkable area that exists today. It's part of this new station that's being built part of the West Lake Project. This is a 309 acre boundary, so under the 320 acres allowed by statute. And it includes economic development opportunities along Ridge Road, County Men Ave, and along the railway within the area. We've worked really closely with town officials and council over the last several years to devise this boundary and outline a number of sites in the in the immediate vicinity of the TOD area that could see significant economic development in the future in line with, of course, the community's local land use and zoning control. We've met many a times with town Munster officials, recently as last week, to, you know, really help them to understand the opportunities before that, as well as receive comments of the boundary. And we do have a resolution and support. And one site to highlight in this 309 acre boundary is the Manson Hunter Club site, which is a significant opportunity for economic development in the town of Munster, already in the Rapid TDD Boundary that will take advantage of this process. Be happy to receive any comments from our Munster, either online or either the person or online.
No one signed up. Thank you.
Anyone online?
No online comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on. The next portion of the hearing is for the Portage and Ogden Bues combined boundary. So this is another one of those scenarios where the boundary is split between two local units of government. This boundary is 308 acres, so under the 320 threshold established by statute. The portage portion of the boundary is 292 acres. The Ogden Bues portion of the boundary is 16.3 acres. During this process, we've worked very closely with AJ and his team, as well as County of Ogden Bues officials, to devise this boundary to understand where they might see economic development to be seen in the future, guided by master plans that they've done and adopted as a local community, as well as our analysis. We do anticipate significant investment in this area in line with the community's local land use and zoning control. And again, the boundary is 292 acres within portage and 16 acres within Ogden Bues, so under that required by statute. And you can see a significant area identified within the map that includes some publicly owned property that we understand the city at some point may like to develop, as well as the opportunities for potential joint development at the Mickey Parking Lot site along US 20. And we've met with city officials throughout this entire process and appreciate all the input that they've provided us, as well as high quality engagement to arrive at this boundary. And then again, met several times over this process with town of Ogden Bues officials advising this boundary as well. And both have offered letters of support. I'd be happy to take public comments, either in the room or online.
No, no one online, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I think that concludes the evaluation of boundaries of the back. Any other comments from the board before we move to adjournments?
Yeah, I'll just offer, number one, I'm so proud to be on this board. But secondly, I just wanted to laud all the hard work in every single one of the communities. And with the leadership that Sherri's exerted and Aaron's help. It's really, you know, I've been in, I've gone a long time in Northwest Indiana, and this is a very, very exciting day. And I look forward to approving these districts at the next meeting. So thank you for your input.
Anyone else? Appreciate everyone attending today and look forward to meeting next month with an official approving this. Their motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.